All right, it's six thirty if y'all will, we'll stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all, it's good to see y'all out here on a rainy Thursday evening. Hey. If we would, somebody make a motion to approve our agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, here none. Okay, public comment.
Mr. Mayor, when you're ready, I do have one that was emailed then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will start, uh, right here with our list to start with Joe Britton.
Well, my name's Joe Britton and I'm director of the Mills River Farm Market and want to thank y'all. Uh, thank the mayor and all the council members for your support for the market in the past. And it has meant a lot to the market, y'all, with support. And tonight, I'm just here to, after watching the video of the meeting the other night, I just want to clarify a couple of things if I may. Take my three minutes, hopefully not over. I just want to start by defining the purpose of a local farmer's market. I know y'all have heard me say this before, but I think it's well worth repeating. It is a place for local farmers and producers to sell their products and a place for the community to purchase fresh local food and support the local farmers and producers. I would like, would like to remind us all that the Mills River Farm Market has asked for help, what we've asked for help. Uh, we have, uh, approached the council requesting the use of a parking lot. And at the time and all that said, what we said along a gravel lot that suffice for us. It would be nice to have a power outlet and a water faucet, but that isn't totally necessary to just make our life easier. We've been ongoing discussions and are still in discussions about this for a while. We were recently told that there was a farm shed would be available to the market uh, on the adjoining property that the town is getting ready to purchase. Uh, it needs cleaning, it needs a good cleaning, of course, it needs painting, a few repairs, and then we'd be good to go. Most farmer's markets that I've ever been to are, occur in just a regular parking. The farm shed for a farmer's market would be a huge accomplishment for the town. One that only a few, very few communities in western North Carolina and upstate South Carolina can comply. This would be a dream come true for the market. We're not asking for a lot of extra money to be spent on this. You know, we don't need it fancy, we don't need it pretty, it is a farmer's market. You know, we just need it functional. Also, the market hopes to chip in with grant funding to help with this once we have, you know, once we are, you know, everything is formalized. You know, that's, but that's something as we've mentioned, we can't do until, you know, we can't put the cart before the horse. We don't think the community supports the plan to wait for a master plan to be written and implemented. We are ready and anxious for this journey to our new home to close. Our vendors want it, our customers want it, the town of Mills River needs. Please put the preparation of the town farm shed back on schedule for use in May, nineteen twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four. My take. Who's behind it? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And once again, thank y'all so much for your support.
Okay, Linda?
Good evening, I'm Linda Britton, I'm the secretary treasurer for the Mills River Farm Market and we do appreciate this opportunity to speak in the public comment section regarding a future home for the Mills River Farm Market. The town of Mills River is growing faster than we ever thought it would, but it is. And along with the growth of the town, so grows the services that are needed. The Mills River Farm Market has grown from nine vendors whose only buyers might have been each other to over forty vendors and between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty shoppers each week. We are locked at the Mills River Elementary School, which is our current location. It has been a wonderful place, but we cannot grow. I mentioned that we have over forty vendors, that's on record as registered for this season. On any given day, we can't really squeeze in much more than twenty-five. We need to expand with the continued growth of the town. More families in town means there's a greater need for the services that we provide. Fresh local food, how to prepare it, teaching youngsters the value of fresh and local food, the double snap program for the families that are facing hardships. Not to mention the dollars that are going into the pockets of our local producers, money that is boosting our local economy. We have so many dreams for the future of the Mills River Farm Market. A move to the farm shed in twenty twenty-four will put us on the road to fulfilling them. We are asking that the council go ahead and give the Mills River Farm Market a long-term arrangement for the use of this farm shed to start our use in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Our vendors are ready and they're excited about this new location. Our customers are excited for us and are anxious for the move to happen. In fact, they are so excited, folks are talking about jumping in to help and make this a community project. They have skills and a can-do attitude, which is just what Mills River was built with. A rustic farm shed is the perfect setting for a farmer's market since the market is only asking for access to the shed for roughly thirty days a year, six hours per day. And it is the perfect venue for other community activities during the other approximately three hundred and thirty days. Activities such as meetings, large gatherings, festivals, and fairs in a town that was created to preserve the agricultural lifestyle. Clean, functional, state, a piece of our tremendous history of farming and agriculture. Cosmetic touches can come later if they're needed during the off-season of the market. As the property usage unfolds over the next few years, there will be many changes. But this corner of the property should serve as a testament to the history of our town, to what has brought us this far and to what is guiding the town of Mills River in the future, farming and agriculture.
Thank you, Linda. Karen Rose?
Hi, my name is Karen Rose and I have sold at the market for five to six years. Uh, Mills River has become a hotspot for people to live. Many people uh, enjoy the farm atmosphere of the area and they really, excuse me, enjoy the farmer's market. Uh, in buying the property, uh, at the, um, cow pasture with the shed, uh, you have given the farmer's market, uh, room to expand and allow more people to visit and enjoy the area. We have people from all over the U.S. and even some, uh, foreign foreigners come visit, you know, on their vacation. Uh, instead of letting the property sit and not do anything about it for next, uh, next year, uh, which you knew it needed fixing up when you got it, I mean, be a forward-thinking, um, town council and get the community involved. The community really likes the farm market, the fresh food. The community, they can see people they don't see the rest of the week, on weekends. Um, for example, make it a community day, get people involved, families involved in the cleanup, in the paint, even in the painting. Uh, sure, there might have to be somebody out there to look at the structural stuff, that's okay. Um, but why not, you know, teach kids how to do community service and, and get it cleaned up? Um, paint it with cows and chickens, let, let kids paint it, you know, they'd love that kind of stuff. Paint it with mountains or bears, whatever, but don't just let it sit. Uh, we need it and you bought it for us to use and for the community to use. So get the community involved and be forward-thinking. Just get her done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Jim Foster?
Okay, I'm Jim Foster, I think you must have known me, I live in Mills River. Uh, looking at your agenda tonight, I saw, we go look at it a little early. I saw something that really, really disturbed about, it was even coming up. There's a request on there. Somebody called various on the ordinance prohibiting commercial use of Mills River for profiteering. And I just think this would be a, this is about a touring company, bicycle tour company, what they want to do is use the park one day a week, several months. They would be in here with lots of, I assume bicycles is what they're saying in their letter. They would assemble here and then travel over to the Mills River Brewery to have lunch. And that would just create more traffic and hazards out here on one ninety-one. Not to mention it's depriving the citizens of Mills River for an outside profit company. Use it. And I just think that, I hope y'all will give serious consideration to just, um, Barney Friday used to say nip it in the bud, because I can see we opened the door. Some big-time problems, next thing we know, we'll have Amazon over here, which they've already been doing and had to run out. Offloading trucks and everything. Uh, they logged up all down the Engels one time recently, couldn't even get in the parking lot. You know, my place over there had to run three out the other day, they were on the back street, I came in, that everything blocked too. They needed a fire truck, how much we couldn't get in, but that's, that's, I just, that's gotta be seriously considered. The ramifications of opening the door to this type of thing, you know, the one that I think I was a part of, that prohibits commercial use of Mills River. So, thank you.
Uh, we've got Bonnie Corey?
I was supporting the farm market, I didn't know I was signing up to speak, so don't call my husband to speak.
Okay.
I will tell you, I am here as a customer of the farm market and it's an amazing thing, it's a great asset to our community. We have a reputation in Mills River as a family-friendly, traditional, uh, wonderful community. We are not asphalt. We are small, but we have a lot going on and the farm market is one of them. And those of us that go week after week during season absolutely love it and would love to give this place a fixture of their own, a place to get out of the weather, a place where we could be out of the weather. And so I'm here for the farm market and tell you, please reconsider, uh, giving us that, that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Bonnie spoke in behalf of Mr. Lloyd, is that right?
Yes.
Say also that.
We'll need you at the mic where it can be recorded, please.
Sign me up. Um, to me, the market, I'm a patron of the market, but it's not just a place to go and buy. To me, it's a social outlet for me. And I appreciate that and anything we can do to move it on and better it, I'm in favor of. And like Bonnie, I came here tonight to support Joe and Linda and everybody that is involved in the market. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we read the one that Sue's got, anybody else would like to speak? If you would, come up, give us your name and, uh, address for the record and you got up to three minutes.
Uh, my name is Donald Renshaw, I'm, I'm one of the uh, people that work, go down to the, uh, I have a business that goes there. And, um, I'm one of, I'm one of the, uh, additions to this area. I come from New England, hard worker. Um, I would just wanna, this hopefully will set you in the right direction. Um, I volunteer and I'm willing to be a supervisor. I grew up on a farm, I know everything that has to be cleaned. Um, I can build a house from frame and the finish. That's not gonna be, take, you know, considered over there, but I will volunteer my time as soon as we're done with this farmer's market this, this season. I am more than welcome, more than willing, if, you know, to, to offer my time and, and it won't cost you a dime.
Okay.
All right, um. I, uh, people used to ask me, how do you take, uh, how do you take down barns and why do you do it? Well, it's because it's, it's valuable and it's part of history and how do you do it? Well, you start from the top and work back to the, uh, back to the foundation. That's gotta be clean. And I've done some things that you can't even imagine. That does not scare me, okay? Give that a good thought.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanna speak for people who might not wanna speak. Who's here for the farmer's market? So, they're all here supporting.
All right, thank you. Okay, Sue, you said you had one that needed to be read into public comment?
Uh, this email was sent to me, um, directly to me. Um, and it's, it's from Mr. Jimmy Reese. Says, I would like for the following email to be read during the public comment section in relation to the farmer's market. Mayor and council, when will it stop? The town has invested well over one hundred thousand dollars in the farmer's market and yet they keep wanting more. They just needed a bathroom trailer, they just needed a kitchen, they just needed to hire a manager and all their problems would go away and they would be self-sufficient. Now all they need is a new location. The farmer's market received more money from ARPA funds than any other nonprofit. More than Merlack, an agency that provides free meals and social activity to the elderly, an agency that truly helps the community. The farmer's market charges vendors for booth rent, the vendors charge for their products. They provide nothing free to the town of Mills River or its residents. Even a farmer from Mills River has to pay for a booth, even though their own tax dollars are also going to supporting this so-called nonprofit. Mills River Council needs to be spending its time on controlling growth. It needs to be solving zoning issues. It needs to be planning for the future that is coming. The farmer's market has wants, not needs, and the only thing they need is to come to the realization that their only viable path to survival is the town take control of the market and run it. The farmer's market has a no-rent lease that is not in jeopardy of going away, there is no immediate need to move, they just want to. Council needs to start dealing with more pressing matters instead of wasting time and taxpayers' money on this same topic. It's a sad day when the council would rather cut town budgets to pay for positions and employees to pay for a group of fifteen people and one councilwoman's agenda. If taking care of the taxpayer is as big a, is as big as a concern as you all have made out over the last month, then stop catering to the wants of one, excuse me, the wants of one organization.
Thank you, Sue.
I believe there was some other emails that was received by council. Um, Daniel printed them off to be read under the minutes also.
You want them all read? All of them?
Well, they cared enough to send it.
Well, uh, how many people here, it's already spoke, sent an email that we could potentially have?
Oh, I just think.
Okay, would y'all like to get up and read y'all's email? I would.
Not necessarily, I thought we sent it in that it would be, you know.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely attach them correct to the minutes and so they're for the record. Oh. Okay, all right. If you'll come up and give us your name or if you've got it with you, that'll be fine too.
That's helpful.
Uh, my name's Beth Cole and I'm a Mills River constituent and a local farmer. Firstly, I want to thank you for planning to provide the Mills River Farmer's Market with a permanent home. I was thrilled to find out that the market would be sharing space with the park soon and I believe this is a win-win and will enhance the quality of life for Mills River residents. After all, what other local communities have a permanent farmer's market facility in such a beautiful agrarian space? What other community residents can take their kids to the park or enjoy a walk by the river after picking up produce and goods grown by their neighbors? I'm writing to ask you to adhere to the original timeline to open the new farmer's market at the park in twenty twenty-four. The market has been on a steep growth trajectory due to the unique quality that our market offers. As a vendor, I can attest that twenty twenty-three is a much busier year than twenty twenty-two. I sell out of nearly all my produce and flower bouquets every Saturday. My customers are mainly regulars and love our market. We have outgrown the space we are in, we need to keep our momentum going to maintain quality vendors and provide our customers with the wholesome market experience they love. Drafting a three-to-five-year plan has its place, but in this situation, you already have a committed community of entrepreneurs who know our business and are motivated. It would be a shame to delay for the sake of plan writing when we know the good that can happen now. As needs arise, we can adjust, but there's no sense in stopping mid-stride to plan. We are not a fledgling market asking for support, we are a thriving part of the Mills River community that is asking you to join with us in adding to milk, value to Mills River. We are well-equipped to use the space effectively right off the bat. The permanent location adjacent to the park will give us the space we need as well as making the park a destination. It will maintain the agrarian nature that Mills River was formed to protect while putting us on the map as a healthy, thriving community. And to speak to the issue of, um, providing food for people for free, um, I know as personally, I give away produce all day long. Um, both, and then there's snap on the double snap on top of that, so we are truly providing our community with food.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else that sent a letter in by email that would like to get up and read theirs? And what I'd like to do is I'm gonna pull the council to see if you want them all read in. I just hate to take that much time up tonight because I think everybody's letters that I read was all consistent with pretty much everything that everybody said, I will say that. Do you want them read in? Correct?
I would, yeah.
Randy?
Daniel, how many are there?
Well, there's. I think there's thirteen left after that one.
And most, or any of them duplicates like were sent, uh.
I believe a husband and wife sent one that was very similar, I don't know if it's worded.
But it was pretty much individually wrote, yes, it was.
I don't mind listening to them, uh, that's what everybody wants.
Jeff?
They all were, um, they weren't form letters and they're all in support, uh, and I think the number fourteen is what I had in my inbox.
Mine too.
It's called, so I would, I would, if it takes council action, move to have them added to the, the agenda and/or a part of the, added to the minutes, but I don't see a reason to read it.
Okay. James? Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of just putting them in the minutes, you know, I think it's gonna be perfectly fine. Yeah. Okay. If it's okay with staff, we'll go with that, okay? All right, anyone else for public comment before we close public comment? Here none? Okay, we'll move forward. Uh, approval of the consent agenda, my motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Senator. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion beforehand? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here none, okay. Uh, moving on to our regular agenda, we're fortunate to have, uh, Tristan with us from French Broad Metropolitan Planning Organization to give us a little presentation. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you, folks. All right, um, so I'm Tristan Winkler, I'm the director of the French Broad River Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO. Uh, as, as the mayor is well aware, we, uh, pummel our, our members with acronyms, uh, that's most of the job. Um, but, um, uh, we were asked to come here and just present a little bit on what we do um, and how we interface with the town, um, and some of the things that we've been working on and will be working on, uh, over the next few months. So, uh, first of all, what is a metropolitan planning organization? Uh, the shortest way that I can put it straight from the regs is it's a forum for cooperative transportation decision-making for a metropolitan planning area. Um, so really what that means in a nutshell is we work with our member governments, including Mills River, uh, as well as NCDOT and other transportation providers to try to craft a regional vision uh, for how we want to improve our transportation network and what are the steps that are needed, uh, to achieve that transportation network. Um, so, MPOs are something that's required for all urban areas with a population of more than fifty thousand. Uh, so there's many, many more, uh, than just us. Um, so, uh, our planning boundaries are based around the U.S. Census Bureau's urbanized area. So what you see in blue is that's the MPO's planning boundaries. Um, and so, e-essentially, we take the urbanized area, uh, and what's anticipated to become urbanized, uh, and that becomes the MPO's area. Uh, we're generally formed to carry out the federal transportation planning process. Um, our MPO specifically began in nineteen sixty-six. Uh, it began centered around the city of Asheville, but since then, as our region has grown, so has our organization. So we've grown to include, uh, nearly all of Boncombe, all of Henderson, um, and Haywood, and in two thousand and ten, we included uh, parts of Madison County around Mars Hill. Um, but the ultimate decision-making body at the MPO, uh, is our board. So all of the transportation decisions that are required to be made by an MPO, uh, whether that's to, uh, provide funding to transportation projects or approve federal actions, uh, all of that goes through our board. Um, and so the beehive photo that we have there represents each seat on our, on our board. Uh, every member government at the MPO has a seat at the table. Uh, also, NCDOT has two seats and we have two, uh, seats that represent public transportation interests of the region. Um, we have, uh, three, uh, general documents that we, uh, call our products. Uh, one of them is the MTP, uh, I won't go too deep into any of these, but, uh, that's the plan that looks out twenty-five years. How much growth is there expected to be coming and what does that growth mean for our roadways and our transportation system? Um, and what are the potential challenges that are gonna come from that projected growth? Uh, that's a federally required document and that's something where we start to look at a very high-level vision of what projects are needed. Uh, also, the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, uh, that's where the rubber meets the road. Uh, any regionally significant project in our region is required to be reflected in this document. Uh, so a lot of the big projects, the widening of I twenty-six, um, the widening of NC one ninety-one, uh, a lot of the private projects that you hear about, those are required to be reflected in the Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, and finally, the Unified Planning Work Program, uh, that's essentially the MPO's budget. Um, but, uh, to note, that's where a lot of feasibility studies in the region, uh, are able to get federal funding. So, uh, one of the things I'll focus on today is the Transportation Improvement Program, that's something we talked about with the Henderson Transportation Advisory Committee last night. Uh, first of all, is we're wrapping up, uh, the development of what will soon be, uh, our most recent, uh, TIP. Uh, that's the twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-three TIP, that reflects planned transportation investments over that time period. Uh, it's a somewhat unusual process for us, uh, this, this iteration. Uh, normally, every two years, we go through a process where we work with our stakeholders and determine what are the projects that need to get funded, that aren't funded right now. Um, however, over the last two years, instead of finding new projects, uh, due to cost increases, uh, across the board, uh, we've had to remove some projects from the schedule. Uh, one of the projects that was removed as part of this, uh, was the Planned Access Management Project on NC two eighty. Um, so that was one of, of several projects across the region, uh, that had to be removed from the schedule uh, due to the, the cost overruns. Uh, however, the NC one ninety-one project is, uh, still planning to move forward uh, with construction slated to begin end fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So, uh, that's something we'll be putting out for public comment, uh, over the summer and our board will be considering for adoption in August. Um, but, uh, we are always working on, uh, new TIPs and other acronyms. But uh we are always working on uh new TIPs and other acronyms. Uh so one thing we're getting started is developing the next one, the twenty twenty six through twenty thirty five uh TIP. In general, what uh what we work on is a process called prioritization. Uh that's the process that really looks at everything from long range plans. Uh and tries to filter out what are the projects that are most needed. Uh looking at congestion, looking at safety, economic development, but also local input. Uh what are the things that our member member governments, our towns and cities uh really wanna see? So this is the process where we really sort out what are the projects that are most needed? What are the projects that are not as high a priority? Um so just to point out with all the acronym soup. Um uh the the longer range plans uh shown above, those are the unfunded plans. Prioritization is where you start to get into real funding. So our general process for uh prioritizing projects is uh very much, well, it's. It's based on state law, the Strategic Transportation's Investment Act. Uh and we are at the very first step. Uh the first step is deciding what projects we want to submit into this process. Uh so uh as an MPO, we get twenty six projects we can submit. Uh with Henderson County TAC, we'll be talking about seven potential projects for submit. Uh there's a number of steps. I won't go through all of them. But uh there are multiple iterations where we engage uh with our member governments, including the Henderson TAC. Uh about how we wanna prioritize projects that are being considered. And uh to note, some something to very important to point out is submitting projects doesn't guarantee funding. Uh again, we'll be submitting twenty six new projects. We have al- also twenty old projects that'll be staying in the system. Uh we're not getting that many transportation projects. Uh most likely, we'll be lucky i- if we get a few new projects uh through this process. But again, it's something that happens every two years. Uh our general way of doing that is uh we have uh we split up meetings county by county. Uh and we ask each of those groups what are their priorities for submitting projects? Again, for Henderson County, we work through the Henderson TAC. Um and all projects being submitted have to be referenced in plan. Uh sometimes there are things that rise to the top uh that require amendments of plans, but for the most part. Uh there's been a lot of planning in this region and so trying to get what's what's in those long range plans and try to get them funded is what we're trying to do. And in terms of submittals, we'll be producing a draft submittal list in August that'll go to our board. Uh that'll go out for public comment, uh and then the final list will be considered in September. Uh and we do have a hard deadline with NCDOT of September twenty nine. Uh but uh in general, again, this goes into the prioritization process. Uh I won't go through all the uh nooks and crannies of this process. Uh but it is somewhat of a unique process uh that we have in North Carolina. Uh it's a process that is very data heavy. It's very data driven. Um so uh for projects, you really have to show that there is a safety issue. There is, there are congestion concerns. Um there are gonna be real benefits uh to the project. Uh but for some of the funding, it's also balanced by local input. Um so especially uh for the regional impact and division needs considerations. The local input plays a much larger role uh in terms of deciding what gets funded and what doesn't. So um I told Daniel that uh I was asked to give a similar presentation earlier this week. And uh I was asked to go fifteen minutes and I went over an hour. Uh so I I trimmed it down quite a bit. But uh i- if there are any questions, uh I'm happy to go uh into much more detail.
So have anything on your mind to ask?
I had one question. On the MPO, but uh. If there's a transportation need that involves Henderson County, but crucial is state Transylvania, which isn't part of the MPO, then. Is that still recognized as a MPO project for the French Broad or how does that work if? If one of these border counties like Henderson and it really involves a lot of partnership with.
Yeah, uh that that would involve the Landiside Rural Planning Organization. Uh we work very closely with them all the time, so. Um that's generally not a problem. A lot of their projects, uh actually. Um they they have an interest in getting their commuters into our employment centers. Uh so we do have a few projects where RPO projects uh wanna come into the MPO. Uh so that's that's something we deal with.
Thank you.
So I just have a couple of things. So I saw where Transylvania County is not a is a member, but they're a non-voting member, correct?
Correct.
And is that because the population doesn't justify them being a voting member?
Um so i- yeah, the again, we're required to bring in all parts of the Asheville urbanized area. Um and in the twenty ten census, there is a tiny, tiny bit. Uh of Transylvania County along US sixty four. Uh that came in to the MPO's region and there was a discussion from my understanding. And the discussion was, you know, that's a very small section. If something comes up, we'll coordinate with you, but we'll focus on the Rural Planning Organization.
And the, if it's a regional impact uh project, you said, does that, does that carry? Does local opinions carry more weight in the in the regional impact?
He'll be able to get you to slide here in a second to show you the impact of it. Regionals, what, seventy thirty?
Right, so uh the way that the North Carolina, North Carolina law has funding split up for these improvement projects. They split it into three tiers. The first is statewide mobility. Uh that focuses for us on interstates and freeways, uh also Asheville Airport. And once a project is submitted, um the projects are selected solely based on data. Um and so that's that's a bit unique for for that tier. Going into the regional impact here, uh the projects that are eligible are US and NC routes. Uh also, if there's something that wasn't funded in the statewide tier, it can move down. Um but the way those projects are selected is seventy percent based on the data and thirty percent based on local input. And to point out, that's not just local input from the MPO, that's also input from NCDOT divisions.
And your carryover projects, are they, do they rank as being more important than than a project that might come in? Maybe this fiscal year, next fiscal year or something?
No, so the the carryover projects, um uh first of all, those are projects that either. Uh it used to be funded, so NC two eighty and Canucka Road, those are projects that were funded or considered funded very recently, but aren't anymore. Uh so that's a carryover project. Um also, projects that are kind of attached to other projects. Uh so parts of NC one ninety one that aren't funded right now, that's a carryover. Um but in general, the data that's used by NCDOT is how bad is the congestion? Um how bad is your safety issue? Um there's, there's no bonus points uh for for any other consideration.
Thanks.
So is this just for fixing congested areas and building new roads?
Um so uh a lot of the funding is for uh roadway improvements. Um but that can be uh a congestion improvement or it can be uh more of a safety focus. Uh there also is funding for uh bicycle and pedestrian projects, transit projects, uh rail projects. Not for us so much, but ferry projects do. Uh so uh we do uh submit standalone bicycle and pedestrian projects into this process. Um one of the key differences with bike pad projects is it requires a twenty percent local match. Um so the roadway projects, all covered. Uh bike pad, whoever is the sponsoring member government is responsible for coming up with twenty percent cost of the project.
So when you all put in new bridges and stuff, are you putting bicycle lines on them when you build them?
Um the NCDOT uh and the MPO have complete streets policies. Uh so when there are roadway changes, uh it is a, it is a policy requirement that complete streets be at least considered. Uh as part of that project.
So at a TAC Henderson County level. What we're needing to do is produce a few ideas to present for this prioritization. For to go in in August, the seventh, I think it is. So we was actually gonna be off at the TAC level in July, but we we're gonna have a meeting just to get these things. Uh in and turned in in time. So what I'm looking for from council is in the next few days, think about any ideas you might have for. Roadway improvements, safety issues, that kind of thing, jot them down, get them to us. Then we can turn them over to the TAC and look at them as a group there. If they've got valid points and reasons to go potentially into this prioritization, we'll pass them on to the MPO level. And see if they get any traction that's from them and then we'll move it on to state, okay? And believe it or not, Daniel just had him on board for the night when we heard this yesterday. So it worked out perfect for us getting to hear it first uh firsthand.
But this doesn't involve the maintenance of our current roads or anything?
Uh potentially, yes, potentially, but it's, you could think of it that way if it's a. Safety issue or congestion issue would help that tremendously in that process moving forward. Anything else for Tristan? And nothing? We thank you. And you're free to get on your way back over the hill while it's still a little daylight. You uh, thanks for coming. All right, we'll move on to B memorandum of understanding, Henderson County Health Department.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna recognize a cool spot to go over this item with you.
Okay.
Yeah, um so we have been in a lot of discussions with the Henderson County Department of Public Health, uh specifically their uh Innovative Approaches Department. Who works specifically um with uh children and youth with special healthcare needs. Um and they have got some grant money that they are looking for ways to to help some of their families um. Just be more inclusive in the community. And one of the ideas that came is, you know, a lot of um. A lot of children with special health needs sometimes can't fully participate in things like special events, particularly because of noise and sensory issues. And so one of the ideas that came from some of our meetings was to do a sensory tent, which would be like a quiet space during an event that um. These kids, and I will. Uh let you kind of explain it, but so with me, I have Karen Caldwell, um Innovative Approaches. She can tell you kind of all about what they do. And uh but mostly, they're just um asking that um, you know, we help. Deploy this program as kind of their pilot program, I think is their hope that we might be the first of. You know, all the other departments in the county to be able to offer this service during uh special events. So if you wanna tell a little bit about the.
Please, if you don't care.
And um and then with that, if that's some, if it's something y'all are interested, we just ask that you give staff permission to sign the MOU and.
Good evening. So my name is Karen Caldwell. I'm an Innovative Approaches Coordinator at Henderson County Health Department. We do have uh our our funding comes from the federal government down through the state to uh to Henderson County. And we're one of three counties that are funded in this state and um so we did um. Our purpose really is to collaborate with key stakeholders, um community partners, parents. To implement somewhat sustainable strategies that will improve the lives of children and youth with special healthcare needs. So um after talking with Nicole, um we came up with this idea of the sensory tent. There have been sensory tents. Uh in other places across the United States, but nothing in North Carolina that we know of. Sort of an innovative approach here in North Carolina and we have tents. We purchased tents and all the supplies to go in the tents, therapy tools. Um for the the children and youth and so. We want to gift that to you all and in hopes that um you can take this sensory tent and use it during park events. Um and, you know, deploy it and have it as a place for um the children and youth who have sensory issues, you know. Loud noises, lots of, you know, heat and uh, you know, sounds and all of this, so they can go and. Chill out for a few minutes in a quiet place and um and then go about their way. So we have already purchased the, all the equipment. And we were just hoping and asking that you would sign the memorandum of agreement that we've sketched out together.
So these tents, would they be supervised by our staff, I would guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we we want it to be more sustainable. We can't be at every event. Uh and so we do have five tents. We're hoping to pilot this with you all and then expand it to some of the other parts in Henderson County, so.
Okay.
Yes, uh we're hoping that your staff would would take on, you know, in it in parks.
The size of these tents, square?
By ten.
Ten by ten, okay.
And we have all the supplies, you know, beanbag chairs, noise cancelling, uh noise reduction, um headphones, some fidget toys. Uh some things on the ground, places for them to sit and just sort of calm down until they can, you know, rejoin the. That's in the park.
Okay. Other questions you want to have? So, thanks. Okay, does any council member have a problem with that? Okay, I don't either. Okay, you're good.
Have y'all gotten feedback from the other places that have done these?
Uh we did talk to, uh we had a a just a brief meeting. Been over a couple of months ago with um some folks in Arlington, Virginia who did this. Uh they had deployed it once and were about to do it in April. Um and sort of gave us some learning, learning lessons, uh tips and things that we sort of incorporated that into. Our process of how we're planning to use them.
Nicole, can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
So I thought I saw in here somewhere where it said it could be staffed by volunteers or parents or something like that, right?
And that's something we definitely talked about, cause obviously we have a very small staff. And if we're busy doing our own event thing, that we would rely on volunteers and uh we've been had that discussion of. You know, if we can't find the volunteers to staff it, can't find either parents or things to do it, there may be special events where it doesn't happen. And they're they're understanding of that, um but obviously, this is something we wanna be able to provide, so so all our citizens can participate. And so um they have a really great, um they call it the Parent Circle.
Right.
Group of already uh organized group of volunteers and obviously we have folks we can pull from that. We can, I think, help sustain this rather than it being a staff.
Yeah.
And that's why if they, you know, listed in the MOU is not a staff is required to do it, it's a. You know, we'll oversee it, but make sure we have the proper manpower to do everything we need to do, including this.
That was not only concerning, if you thought that would be. A doable situation to have volunteers or parents or something to staff. Thank, thank you, Will. We come up with another.
We do have the the Parent Advisory Council. That's this PA circle that she's mentioning.
Okay.
And they, uh several of them have already said they are interested and willing to to do this. Now, you know, they do have children who um have special needs, so um, you know, their availability may not always be uh lining up with. Park event, but they're willing. Um there's also, we have steering committee, a pretty large steering committee. Members who might be able to help volunteer as well and also maybe interns from the Blue Ridge College.
I hate to say it this way, but are these people, have they had background checks or? I mean, I'm just asking, cause I could see it potentially being a lawsuit to our town if something was to go wrong.
They've, not as far as I'm.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to think, as bad as I hate to, outside the box anymore, yeah. There could be an issue. Are these things totally enclosed or are they open on one side or?
They are, they have all four walls, but they have the mesh on two walls, so you can open them up, you know, for some airflow.
Okay.
Um we do have uh like some lighting in there, battery powered lighting and then um three. For each tent, we have three um fans that are battery powered to come for airflow and then a door that can be. fans that are battery powered to come for airflow and then a door that can be. The, the idea is for it to be sort of darker and calming.
Calmer, yeah, makes sense.
And y'all provide the initial setup?
Yes.
And are we responsible for maintaining and replacing if something messes up, like if the tent wears out or the toys gets broken?
Um, this being a pilot, uh, if the toys walk away, they just, they're gone. Um, you're not expected to replace it, uh, maybe, you know, in a year or two, we see what's working, what, with, what is not working, maybe we can replace them at that time, but um, we've written it into the M O A that, you know, no one's responsible for replacing if it blows away or um, if any of the toys go missing or, so, yeah, there, there's no liability on anyone's part there.
Uh, personally would like to, you know, run this by the town attorney and make sure we're covered on everything before I would be okay with it since it's a new thing and we don't have a lot of resources together, information is how it's working other places outside of even North Carolina. But I'll leave it up to council to for any other discussion or comments. I'm not saying I'm against it by no means, I'm just saying I want to make sure the town's covered liability wise.
Uh, I agree with, with you, Sean, because I, I don't know, putting a, a dark space where children are supposed to go at the towns and the town doing it, if that might leave us open for, for something, if something does happen. So I don't mind having Sharon.
Okay, okay.
A, a parent would be required to go in with the child.
Okay, that's, that's a game changer.
Or, you know, a caregiver, not necessarily a parent.
Right, but and they'd have to take them in and stay with them.
Yeah.
That's a big difference, okay, yeah. I thought it was to free the parents up with the other kids or something.
It's not a babysitting.
Okay.
Event, uh, it's, it's just to help them calm down and it's four or five minutes. It's not, you know, longer for an hour. It's just to get them settled and calm down so they can.
Yeah, it makes me feel a lot better. I still would like to see Sharon, uh, just read through it and make sure we're covered. Has she even seen it at all? Probably not, okay. Yeah, that makes it more possibility a lot greater, I think.
I mean, I could see it, you know, something at like party in the park, um, even during the day. Yeah, somewhere where there is lots of noise and excitement. And the way I kind of envision it is, you know, we'll always have our portion of our tenant where we have our marketing materials. So either myself or a programmer would always be at that tent and I could see it like put behind so we can keep an eye on the volunteers using it. You know, it's not like we would, would never put it, you know, way on the other side of an event where we have no idea what's going on, um, but kind of that setback, that's kind of, you know, that's just the way I envision it is like particularly, you know, like party in the park. We have our tenant, we've got our table with our marketing materials and our giveaways and then, you know, kind of behind that would be that, that sensory next to. That's it.
And I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure the town's not setting herself up for something that, if something happens.
Anybody else, any more questions? Okay, thank you so much. So, um, if it's okay with staff, pass this on to Sharon, let her look it over for us.
Sure.
Okay. Well, moving on, uh, see Trek Travel, I guess.
I'm going to hand it off to Nicole once again to give you a summary of your request.
Um, yeah, so, uh, Trek Travel, um, is an international cycling tour company that offers tours in the area approximately 12 to 14 weeks per year. Um, they came on May seventeenth and they attempted to conduct the bike tour beginning at Mills River Park. Um, like we do with any, any of these folks that try to come in and conduct, uh, um, business on town property, we've informed them of our ordinance. Um, and told them that per ordinance, they need to receive town council permission to be able to conduct business. Um, and if you'd like, I can read that ordinance to you. So that's, um, number twenty twenty dash twelve under section ten is profiteering. It shall be unlawful for any person or organization, including nonprofits, to engage in soliciting, advertising, peddling, begging, or selling without permission of the town of Mills River Town Council on any park within the town. With that, um, the folks here, um, if you have any questions for them.
All right, uh, so if you don't mind, take a few minutes, tell us what you're doing, what you're wanting to do.
Absolutely. So I'm Spence Coakner. I work at Trek Travel as a guide and, uh, my colleague here is Rebecca Falls, also works as a guide and also trip design coordinator. What we'd like to do is, uh, once a week, uh, and the dates are from approximately one May through fifteen June, and then ten August and one October on a Wednesday from nine thirty to ten thirty. We'd like to start a bicycle ride from your park. And what we're talking about twenty people max. And we would come in with a couple of vans, we'd unload the bikes, unload the people, do a quick, uh, safety brief, make sure the bikes are good to go, and then they would ride out of the park and then they'd be gone. Uh, why we're trying to do it this way is it allows us to avoid riding on one ninety one and, uh, you know, try to, you know, impacting traffic on that. This allows us to access less traffic roads and make the whole riding experience a lot more enjoyable for everybody. Um, if we were doing this, we'd have at max, and this is worst case scenario, uh, two vans with trailers, uh, approximately twenty personnel total. Uh, we'd take all our trash with us, uh, so we'd set up through a quick talk and then we'd be out of here. So one hour would be the worst case scenario that we'd be in the park. So that in a nutshell is what we're trying to do. Uh, we're happy to do this anywhere you would like us to. Um, normally we try to find a more secluded part of the park so that we're not impacting, you know, traffic into the library or something else like that. Uh, but yeah, that's really kind of what we're asking for.
Question, discussion? And you're needing our permission strictly because it's a, you're, you're charging for the tour?
That, that is correct. Trek Travel is a for-profit company. They run cycling tours all around the world.
Okay.
And so that's, well, I guess based on your ordinance, even nonprofits are in the same, same.
Right, okay.
So you're leaving from the park and going where? So is it, is it the same route each time?
Yes.
And what is the route?
So we would go out of the park, we'd take the trail through the field here, go through by the, uh, stream and then head out going east. I can't remember the name of the road. Uh, but basically where the pavement starts.
Hooperland, cross the river and Hooperland, now Hooper.
Uh, just across the river and through those farm fields there.
Okay.
Correct, just east of the park here.
You're probably going up South Mills or North Mills and stuff.
Come off in that small dirt parking lot there by the boat landing, uh, we'd be hanging a left onto that paved road, uh, avoiding the growl.
And going out Jeffries up North Mills probably.
I can get you the road names too, if needed.
Okay.
So the fields you're talking about riding on are back here or over here?
Um, I'm orienting myself here. I believe the trail is like right over this way.
Oh.
Uh, and, yeah, the paved path through the field.
Yep, and you're coming out down at the river.
Yep.
Going up, cross the new bridge, going out across the new, what I want to call new pavement.
Yes. And then we hang a left at the end of that road where it tees into it. And so we'll cross the busy road here and then ride back above, uh, was it Brevard Road or, uh, whatever the, the main highway is going, uh, from airport to Brevard.
Two eighty, yes, okay.
My interpretation comes from the same things that Mr. Foster pointed out, the comment is simply that. I don't know, we're not set up terms ordinance wise to differentiate one property from opportunity from another. And it's obviously if we don't allow it, then we don't have to make those hard decisions. We don't have to go back and revisit the ordinance, so it's not, I don't think we're equipped really to uh, to give a yes, even though there's nothing that this gentleman's described that I find problematic other than that's a property opportunity. The next one comes in, I don't have to
Right.
address it without being arbitrary.
Mm-hmm.
And that's for that reason, I'm, I'm inclined not to, this.
Okay. Anyone else?
I agree with Councilman Young. I just don't feel like it's, uh, I just don't want to open the, open this can to start down this road myself. It's just where I'm at.
Okay.
Would it be possible just to do it for a temporary period? So our next time that we'd be running tours here would be August through, uh, one October. And if it starts becoming a problem, then you don't need to renew it.
Is there anywhere else that would fit for y'all?
Well, currently we start from Mills River Brewing, which elect, which forces us to, uh, go on one ninety one, which does impact traffic.
Ingles doesn't allow this either because that would put you over next to North Mills River Road or.
One of the attractions of doing it here is because there's actual bathrooms here. So since we're, uh, shuttling down from Asheville, it's about a twenty to thirty minute drive depending on twenty sixes. And it allows them to use the bathroom before they start off on their bike ride.
Gotcha.
Since we're not in quasi judicial, am I allowed to ask if, have we ever allowed this before? Am I allowed to ask on it?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the answer to that, but.
I've been here five years. I would say at least once a week, I, we have somebody in the park that is trying to conduct business on town property. They all get the same opportunity to come, you know, we tell them the rule to come speak to council. Y'all are the first ones to take us up on that offer. Um, I think y'all have scared some people away. So, so in five years that I have been here, this is the first time a request has made it to this body. Um, although I, as I said about once a week, we let folks know that they can't do it without your permission.
Well, gotcha. So last year, Nicole, there was a marathon here in the park, correct?
Yes, so they filled out a special event application. So that was a special event that occurred solely within the park.
Okay.
And so they went through the application process, paid the fee, we got their insurance certificate, all that sort of stuff.
And that different, that's different how? From this request.
Than this? Well, it's just, um, I guess they, they applied, you know, they, I feel like this is different because it's a recurring. I'm not sure how we would handle a recurring special event. I don't think it stipulates. I mean, I guess there was no, there would be no reason they couldn't apply for a special event permit. Um, you know, one every week for however many months.
Was the run for profit?
It is, yeah.
And did they give it to an organization or who profited from it?
It's a, a for-profit business and so, but through their special event application, so they had to pay the town a fee um, to be able to conduct that through that process.
How much is that fee do you remember? I don't.
It's, um, two hundred and fifty dollars for a four hour block, um, because the, um, that specific event was all day. It was an eight hour day, so they had to pay five hundred dollars.
Gotcha.
I think I agree with Randy and Jeff that we don't need to open that can because we're going to have them lining up after that.
It says here you're open to purchasing a permit paying weekly use fee. What, what's that? Uh, what's your maximum amount?
Do we want to negotiate? What's your bottom dollar? Uh, absolutely. I mean, if there's a fee to allow us to do this, we'd be more than happy to do that. Um, I don't know what a reasonable fee is. I mean, is it, I mean, is twenty, fifty dollars a week? Is, is that fair to the town? I, and, and I don't mean to sound that flippantly like, I, I mean, we, we're not, we understand that there's a, it's, it's a pull on resources and all that. I mean, we're going to use water at the restrooms and all that stuff. So if there's a fee associated, we're happy to pay a fee.
I think my reservation, one of my main reservations behind it is Nicole just said that she gets requests or you see people out here once a week starting to do this. So if we start allowing this, where do we ever draw the line and stop?
Or, or can we?
I don't know.
And is it fair to the residents?
Yeah, I don't know. You know, I don't know that the residents ain't part of the riding group. I don't know.
Uh, we usually get our guests are coming in from all over the country. Um, Rebecca and I are local.
Okay.
So.
Yes. So with that being said, where y'all at with it?
Comment, no.
No for now? Where you at?
No, I don't think so.
No, James?
No, it sounds like we get this a lot.
Okay, Jeff? Okay, all right. I think you got a good thing going. We just need to find you a good place to take off from.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, it, it's, uh, yes, and potentially two eighty two also, you know.
Yeah. Right.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on, hold on.
And they've got restaurants.
They do, and they encourage bike to start.
Okay, the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three dash oh six budget amendment.
As is customary each year, near the end of the fiscal year, we do a budget amendment to cover any additional, uh, revenue or expenditures we need to wrap up for the end of the year. I'll hand it off to Finance Director Sue Powell to give the details.
This particular budget amendment is, uh, you're, you're very familiar with it. We're always adjusting the, um, line item for property tax collections from the fire department. Um, uh, I brought you one in March and honestly, I tried to estimate revenues through the end of the year and mostly motor vehicle revenues were much higher than anticipated. So I'm just adjusting the budget again with your permission so that we're in compliance with state law. And I am using a line item. Um, we, we had created, um, a capital project, a capital line item for the, um, playground, um, accessibility project. And we waited on the grant so long that that has not started. So those funds will go back to our fund balance and I think are reallocated again in the budget. But in the meantime, I'm using part of it to cover this line item.
Okay. Any questions for Sue?
On that portion?
We, we will need, um,
A motion to approve, right?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Okay. If no one has any questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance amendment for the budget. It's twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year has presented, uh,
Thank you, Randy. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none.
Okay, moving on to fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
We have, um, a presentation prepared for you if you'd like to see it. Um, and it would, it's basically a, a kind of a recap of the discussions we've had so far, which I, if you indulge me, I'd like to go through that one more time just so the members of the public who are here, um, can see kind of where we started and where we're going. Give me just one moment to get that pulled up, okay?
It'll take about three minutes.
Sure. We'll take a quick three minute break.
Okay. So I am going to do a shorter version of the budget presentation that I gave you back in May uh, for the benefit of those who are here tonight and who may have not seen the original presentation. Um, so first off, I want to talk about key terms that, um, we've, we've talked a little bit about. Fiscal year for us runs from July one to June thirtieth. Um, you'll see that as F Y twenty twenty-three, F twenty twenty-four, you'll see it just as F Y twenty twenty-four. In North Carolina, you're either a city, town or a village, um, or you're unincorporated in, in North Carolina, those are all the same thing, either in this. Those are all the same thing, either municipality or non-municipality. Your fund balance is your assets minus your liabilities. General fund is what we call our operating account. Um, and then capital reserve, our savings account, where we can legally set aside money, um, to save for future investments. And one penny of the tax rate this year based on evaluation is two hundred and nine thousand dollars. Uh, so just in terms of the development of this document, it started back in, well, formally it started back in March, but it really takes place throughout the year. The numbers, there's the dates that are in red are statutory deadlines that are required under North Carolina state law. Um, so the, the next one we're looking at is July first, which is, um, deadline for the adoption of the, the budget. Mills River provides, uh, these services. I've, uh, the ones that are in bold are ones that we were chartered under. Uh, we also provide building code enforcement through a contract with Henderson County. We do parks and recreation in-house, uh, we do street maintenance. We have one about a half mile of the street frontage or street mileage. And then watershed improvements is something that we're mandated to do by the state. Um, so the overview of the budget, the original recommendation was eighteen cents, which was ten cents to the fire department and eight cents to the town. The revenue neutral rate as provided by Henderson County is fifteen point two cents. The neutral plus, which I'll get into in a moment, um, is their revenue neutral rate plus the tax equivalent of the sheriff's contract salary adjustment. And the deemed debt payment for the property. Uh, and one thing I have not mentioned really in much detail throughout these last few weeks is the ARPA investment. We're allocating the remaining funds that are, um, for the American Rescue Plan Act, which is two million dollars towards, um, property acquisition as well as farm land preservation. And then seventeen thousand five hundred for the farm market. So the overall capital investment as of this week is three million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars with an operating budget of five million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and five dollars. So your total budget is, uh, just over nine million dollars. Uh, which is, that's an accurate number, but I'll say it's a little bit artificially inflated because ARPA funds aren't, aren't a recurring amount of funding. So we won't have this next year. Um, a lot of budgets are like this across the state where people are utilizing their ARPA funds and artificially inflating their, their numbers. Um, overview in terms of operations, um, the current budget, as you will see tonight, includes the addition of one new position, which is taking the part-time administrative assistant, making it a full-time deputy tax collector. The two new departments I include are just for transparency and more accountability within our budgeting process. They're not new services or anything like that. We've been doing tax collections, but we've created a new department to track everything associated with that. And the information technology is a new department we've created to, um, house all of our software subscriptions, our website, um, anything like that, that's related to, to information technology is going to be in that department. Um, farm land preservation is something that we're using, allocating, um, half a million dollars of ARPA funding for. And then the other big adjustment this year is the debt payment for the new, new property acquisition. So just a few comparisons, last year, as in the current year that we're in, the approved budget, excuse me, the budget that was adopted last year, um, was five million, two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. It's been amended to be five point seven, which accounts for the property acquisition we did last fall. The original recommendation to you was six million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-one. And they proposed as, um, a result of our discussions these last month or so is five million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And so the difference between the amended budget for the current year and proposed budget is only a four percent increase, which is, which is great considering the, the cost of doing business these days with, um, with inflation. That's a, that's a very small increase year over year. Uh, in terms of capital, uh, investment, uh, the two big ones are, well, the one big one, I guess, is the property acquisition of two parcels of land. Um, and with that, we've funded, uh, we've concluded funding for a master plan for the properties, which would allow us to apply for Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant to help offset the cost of that purchase. Uh, the other big one in, um, um, more development related is the Unified Development Ordinance, which would be an update to our existing code structure and merging that into one document. So you'd have a, you know, one ordinance that has subdivision and nuisances and, um, zoning, you know, development standards in it. Now we're carrying over a number of projects that were budgeted this year, but not completed for, for various reasons. Uh, one of them is the maintained green space in the backfield, which we, um, was approved recently, uh, but won't be completed this year. Um, the Meadow Project, the golf cart, which we ordered but have not received. And then the Playground Access, uh, project, which was the ramp and the step sound of the playground from the upper parking lot. Um, we're not, we were not able to complete that considering when there was, when the grant was received in the, in the middle of the year. Uh, as far as revenues, this hasn't changed, um, since your last meeting, um, with the exception of the top row taxes at the lorm and the bottom row of fund balance appropriated. Um, and those have changed from, the original recommendation was three point six eight million dollars of, uh, tax revenue. Um, which was an eight cent tax rate for the town. And then the original recommendation was one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars for, uh, which would be appropriate in fund balance, which would cover the capital projects. Both of those has been, have been reduced. Um, this new number right here, three point four eight million assumes a seven cent tax rate. And the capital, excuse me, the transfer from fund balance has reduced to one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and five dollars. That's mostly a result of removing a few projects from the capital, um, the capital budget that were included in the first presentation. Um, and I showed this at your last meeting and I wanted to just bring it up again. When the budgets are prepared each year, the, the operational needs are fulfilled based off of expected revenues. And then we look at capital projects and whatever that capital number is, uh, we pull that amount from fund balance. And we do that because fund balance is, is savings that's in the bank, um, that should be spent on investments in the town, but they're one-time expenditures. So you don't need to adjust your tax rate every year to pay for capital projects. So the, the higher your rate and the more projects you have, excuse me, the more projects you have, typically the more money you're pulling over. Um, but was, as was the case this year and every year prior, when you calculate your tax revenue, there's going to be some, some amount of surplus or shortfall in that number. It can be ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars. Um, so let's say your capital projects are a hundred thousand dollars and your tax revenue, um, is, is, um, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So rather than pulling a hundred and ten out of the savings to do the projects, you only pull ninety out. So you, the additional capital revenue or tax revenue will go to offset the cost of capital projects. So expenditures have changed a little bit since our last meeting, um, specifically administration and tax collection. They went up from our meeting on Monday because I, I put back in there the, the deputy tax collector full-time position. Otherwise, things have stayed the same. So as far as highlights for the operational budget, I wanted to talk about our savings accounts, community services, the tax department, farm land preservation. So the expenditures or as listed in the budget, the inter fund is a transfer from our, uh, operating fund to our capital reserve accounts. We started this back in fiscal year twenty-one with just a quarter of a penny going to the parks, uh, savings account. And then has increased slowly over the last few years. And this year, the recommendation is to put a full penny equivalent of revenue into the parks savings account. And then three quarters of one penny into the new town hall. Which is a, either new building or improvements to this building for a total of three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Tax collections, um, again, this is a new department, which is why you don't see anything in that first column, FY twenty-three. Um, so the recommendation originally included a, um, full-time tax, deputy, deputy tax collector in addition to our tax collector. Uh, and then the associated benefits with that, you'll see in the FY twenty-four, there were some reductions and, uh, those are largely a result of, uh, an error on my part when entering the data. First time you saw it until tonight. Community services is what we, where we house all of our nonprofit requests for the operational budget each year. The Mills River Farm Market that, on the top there, sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty, that is going towards operation. And then seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars is going to the SNAP program, which is coming from the ARPA funding. The Mills River Life and Richmond Center has requested ten thousand. The Mills River Partnership did not request funding this year in, in this medium. Uh, Smart Start, uh, for Children requested fifteen thousand. And then, uh, the Housing Assistance Corporation requested sixty-five hundred, but one question by council. They did not have any product lined up in Mills Rivers and that project, that funding has not been included in the final number. And the Literacy Connection has requested twenty-five hundred. So all of those are in there. Uh, farm land preservation, we've established a preservation committee. We're working on a, a scoring system to identify qualifying properties. And the first round of funding of that is coming from half a million dollars of, of the two million that are, you know, coming from ARPA. And then, um, highlights for capital, again, there's, uh, American Rescue Plant funding is two million dollars at three point one. Uh, the, the majority of the funding is going towards Parks and Recreation, but a million of that is going to property acquisition. Uh, and the other million from the ARPA is going into public facilities for land acquisitions. So we split that up between those two, those two categories. There's nothing funded for transportation this year. Uh, there are projects, kind of placeholders for next year and two years later. Um, those, those are evaluated every year. We don't have any updates on the Mills River Valley Trail yet, so we don't know yet when that will be designed and therefore when we will be responsible for, for paying the match. Um, so I keep it in there as a placeholder. For Parks and Recreation, uh, we've got the man, managed Meadow and Butterfly Garden. Again, that's converting the lower field from the, um, grass to the more native species of, of plants and grasses. The maintained green space is the contract that was just approved with Moore and Son a couple of weeks ago. Uh, part of that, again, was, was hoping to be done this fiscal year, um, but most of it will occur next year. And the original estimate for that was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But since we've gotten quotes back, um, the total cost was around ninety thousand, so we're putting in a hundred thousand to be safe. The Playground Access is, is, has been there, has three hundred and fourteen. Uh, UTV slash golf cart is the golf cart that we ordered. And then the mower is twenty-five thousand. And then the land acquisition is a million, twenty thousand. And that million again is going towards the actual purchase, twenty thousand going towards the development of the master plan to apply for a five hundred thousand dollar grant. Community development includes the ordinance update as well as the farm land preservation. The ordinance update will take at least two fiscal years to complete, so we're splitting it, uh, half in this year and half in next year. Uh, and equipment, these are just routine purchases. We, we try to replace computers on a three-year cycle. I think three of them are due this coming year. And then our server is, has reached the end of its useful life and it needs to be, it needs to be replaced. Any questions on any of that? I did want to also touch on changes that were made since we met on Monday. So again, the recommended tax rate was eighteen cents. The fire department's ten cent rate has been approved by the county. Revenue neutral was fifteen point two cents. The neutral plus, again, which goes to fund those additional items, which were the debt payment and the salary adjustment and the sheriff's contract, brings the rate to sixteen point nine four. And what I'm calling the optional reduced rate is if you want to convert the part-time position to the full-time deputy tax collector. Um, that would get you closer to, to offsetting the full cost of that. Again, a penny is worth two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So explanation of the mutual plus rate, um, the debt payment is equivalent of one point two one pennies. The salary adjustment is two tenths of one penny and the sheriff's contract is a third of a penny. Our total, uh, new expenditures of one point seven four pennies, uh, which would bring your total rate to sixteen point nine four cents. Or six point nine four for the town's purposes. The optional reduced rate that I'm using, uh, includes all of those same figures, but also adds in the deputy tax collector. So to bring that to a full-time position, it's an additional, just under two tenths of one penny, which would bring your total new expenditures to one point nine three pennies for a total rate of seventeen point three. Again, seven point one three, which would go towards the, um, the town's operational needs. Been through that. So I'll just give a quick summary, um, since we last met this week, we upgraded the part-time position, the deputy tax collector position. We did reduce contingencies a little bit to help offset some of those expenditures. Um, and then, uh, the final proposed operating budget as of this evening is five million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And the la- last thing I'll mention is, um, additional considerations the council want, might want to keep in mind is next year, the debt payment, again, as we learned from the local government commission, is going to increase over what we're currently planning for by about forty-two thousand dollars. Um, we certainly plan conservatively in terms of our expenditures and revenues for, uh, next year, but it is, it is possible that they might not come in, um, per our estimates. So, you know, cutting the rate as low as you, you possibly can, uh, might mean that you need to make adjustments mid-year in terms of other revenue. Um, and then again, the lower the rate, the more you're bringing in from your savings to complete your capital projects, which is not wrong by any stretch of the imagination. Um, it's just the more, the lower your rate, the more you're having to pull in. So you're just dipping into your savings more than you might otherwise. Lastly, tonight we're hoping for adoption, um, the deadline is next week. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Daniel? Or any other staff? No questions, how about a motion to approve one of his presented? Options? I'll make a motion. That we approve Daniel's budget as presented. Can you go back? Here, four slides, Dan? One, one more, one more. I'll make a motion that we approve Daniel's budget. As presented with the exception of the deputy tax collector position. And the tax rate of seventeen percent, seventeen cents.
Yeah, we've got a motion on the floor.
I'll entertain a second. James, second. Any discussion?
Yes, what would be the? Where would you put the? Six percent?
That's about twelve thousand dollars, so we would reduce the amount that comes from, uh, your fund balance to cover capital projects.
And is your, on this, the salary adjustment, it's, it's a penny.
Mm-hmm.
Is that? Current, um? Current plus the, what we've discussed, or is this, is there? Um, some contingency in that rate for the potential of the study going up?
No, this, it, it only includes a six percent across the board adjustment.
So insurance, if you will.
Or.
At that level.
That's right.
Jeff, Sandra?
Well, I'll remark that, um, I'm going to vote against Randy's motion. That's because this council, we've taken two deep dives on two budgets, one being the manager's proposed budget, which is eighteen cents and a seventeen cent proposal before tonight. They are both tax increases. But what really troubles me is that this one penny that, um, that we're at odds about, fails to fully cover the debt service on this land purchase that's coming up. Doesn't have any money set aside to get the farmers market in there in short order. It doesn't pay for park position, we're about to drastically increase the amount of land that we manage in, in, in form of parks. And both budgets pay for a pay study for our staff, but the seventeen cent budget that the motion is for doesn't even cover implementing it if there's, uh, if it results in insufficiently or underpaid staff. And the last thing I'll throw in is that barking on farm land preservation, which I could be more excited about, but I too would like to see it have a go-to reserve fund, you know, a quarter of a cent, half cent, whatever we can find. But when we're making these kind of cuts, I think, um, we're hurting ourselves in that sense. So while they're both, both budgets are tax increases, no matter what comes out of it, what I hate more in tax. while they're both, both budgets are tax increases, no matter what comes out of it, what I hate more than tax increases is two increases. I'd hate that to come back next year short order and have to say we really need to draw more taxes for some of these other things that that we're failing to cover tonight. So just want to get that in there.
Sandra?
I think we need to do the best we can to keep the tax rate down. And the town can look at ways to tighten up the bootstraps and work on our budgets here rather than put the burden off on residents. And, you know, if we need to next year, we can reevaluate that. But we've got our industry tax that comes in. And we've had new homes built in Mills River. I think we may see more than what we've got planned.
I'll just say that uh Mills River is hopefully going to make one of the biggest investments of its history as a town in the next few months. And I know people look at this thing differently, but I look at it somewhat as a business. And we've had people up here tonight, you know, wanting to make sure this farmer's market moves forward. I want it to move forward. My idea. You know, put it under that shade, but if I, if I vote right here, revenue neutral plus, you know, I'm gonna have to rob money from somewhere to make it happen, be it out of capital reserves or somewhere to make that happen. Um, when realistically, everybody just got reevaluated at a fair market value and still under. Still under. I can't rebuild that house for what they appraised it at. And uh, the citizens of Mills River, uh, I wish more people would get up here and tell us how they really feel about this. I really do. Uh, we got, it's, you know, seems to be three to two out of the five of us. But we represent, you know, close to eight thousand people and I'd like to hear more opinions from all them people, but they've been tight lipped. So I really don't know where they're at on this, other than the farmer's market bunch. But I'm gonna have to say I'm with Jeff. Yeah, I mean, y'all vote me in or whatever. If it was up to me today, I would probably be at nineteen cents. I would probably kept the penny that the fire department, county made the fire department giveaway, just so in two or three years. I don't have to jack it right back up there where it's going and probably a little more and it's going to be neutralized. When it's all said and done, over a period of five years, it'll end up being neutralized. But uh, just from a business standpoint, if you want to keep the ball rolling, you better not cut the funding to it or it's going to stop rolling. Just plain and simple, in my opinion. So with that being said, I've got a first and I've got a second. Any more discussion before we move forward?
You also can hear the people out here want to throw in an opinion?
Well, you're welcome to. I mean, we don't have a whole lot here, but we're welcome to.
Anybody got an opinion?
Eric, you mind?
Sure, come on up.
Yeah.
It's always the same, same old, right? So Brian Ross, uh, you know, last time I was here, I was a little frustrated, didn't get my words together. I think I apologized to all of you afterwards. Like, just frustrating. Since bugged everybody and asked for some numbers, um, one of them was the amortization schedule. And one thing encouraging about the amortization schedule is it it comes back to us after that two or three years. We're actually, what did you, what did you give for the the investment? Uh, one point two cents, one and a quarter?
One point two one, yeah.
Sorry, one point two one. Yeah. So one point two one is a hundred percent for that. That's a permanent tax increase. And Jeff, I really appreciate you using those words. I'm I'm not sure they've been said. It is a tax. Um, but that's a permanent tax increase, so that will help. James, you and I spoke. If you take this amortization chart and you make day one's payment every month for this, I'm sorry, I have to put my glasses on. I believe it's a hundred and fifty-six months. If you make that same payment the entire time, by the end of this, you've got six hundred and thirty, or sorry, six hundred and fourteen thousand dollar difference. That's over six hundred thousand dollars from this tax increase to a hundred and fifty-six months from now. And we're collecting more. I had a bit of a change of heart since two weeks ago when I dug down into these and I realized we're running this ship. I actually had a little bit of a change of heart. Not that you're nineteen, but I'm I'm with Jeff. I don't, I don't have to vote, but I've gone through these numbers. I've asked for the revised budgets. I've asked for the amortization schedule. I've critiqued it, run my own business. I wouldn't run it this type.
Yeah.
I can't remember about this. Park department, I think, we're valid. We got hit pretty hard from Henderson County, though. We ended up with, I believe, a twenty percent increase over or twenty percent of the the increase that the county could have given us.
Oh, the revalue?
Without, yes, the revalue.
It was about thirty percent.
The rate that county gave, I'm sorry, the rate increase. Let me rephrase that. The rate decrease the county gave?
Mm-hmm.
Ended up being twenty percent of what it could have been.
Exactly, right.
Right?
Yeah.
So we're we're all getting a little bit of a bill there. Stop, I just got to looking at this, our population, our our traffic. It it tells me there needs to be more in this account tomorrow. So I've had a big change of heart on it, but not, not maybe to nineteen.
I'm fair with that.
But in running my business, I I I I see this amortization chart and gives me a little bit of hope. I would ask him, you know, James, I ask you this question. I don't think anyone's asked it. What happens when we pay this off? Does that, does that one point two one have a sunset in it?
It possibly could.
It could.
Could.
Right. This could be a special leviness. Everyone wants to look at it that way and separate as a capital investment, but that's not what we're doing. We're looking at making it permanent. So, you know, I I I I do mortgages all the time in my business. I don't know what this formula is.
It's crazy. It's a crazy state mandated form.
I get it. So I assume that, you know, the L G F C U is in this, right? The Local Government Commission.
It's the L G C, the Local Government. And and it's a stable principle.
Right.
Never seen it before either.
Right. So that's what it is. It actually appears to be front-loaded with interest disproportionately. It's actually not. If you were to run a straight amortization on this over a hundred and fifty-six months, we as a town would pay eighty-four thousand or more purely in interest.
Right.
I'm not sure why they're front-loading the principal. But by the reduction in the future payment, if you, that's that's where the six hundred thirteen thousand dollars one point two cents over a hundred fifty-six months. If we make that payment, you know, to ourselves exactly like that, we're going to have a surplus of six hundred thirteen. It's still not enough for this town.
Right.
So, kind of talking out of both sides of my mouth, but from last two weeks ago and listening to you guys talk on Monday, I thought, you're smart people. Feel like I'm missing something. And I started bugging people for for no.
And I credit you for taking the interest in it and digging deeper as a citizen to look into it and and to even give it second thought.
James, I think I said to you, if something doesn't add up, two weeks ago, after we walked out of here, I said, I'm gonna get nosy. I didn't ask anything that I wasn't allowed to be given, but it didn't add up. So frustration might have shone through two weeks ago, but I'm with you if I had to vote.
Okay, thank you.
We did stir up my interest as far as that level payment and effectively you, we will gain back half a cent. Uh, if we're still in ten years on two oh nine, we will be gaining back money because the payment is going now. So we just make it the first two years that's high, it does, it drops. It's crazy. I'm not, I'm not, but there is. Yeah. It would also pay off the principal and reduce some of that future interest. That that would not be on this.
Exactly. It would change if you kept doing that. Yeah.
Stay, you can say it's not a dollar right here.
Yeah. Yes.
And I would put that to the coal.
Any other dis- anybody else? Sorry, there's none.
Hello again, Kristin Rindtall. I just, again, I'm so glad I can't actually top like you said. But it goes back to you need to look to the future. You made a huge decision to purchase this property. You didn't do that lightly. To support that property and everything that needs to happen with this staff. And, you know, improvements there, you need to keep looking forward. I know the short term, it can hurt. But trust me, doing tax increases year after year, even just as a board, that's a tough pill to swallow, let alone doing one increase that feels a little too big. This is in all, something that you've done. The county has put this to Mills River. But Mills River needs to put itself first in making sure that we're living up to all of our obligations. So I just appreciate you having the conversation and looking at the neutral plus and then looking back at that eighteen and saying, what is the difference? I think Mr. You said it very well of breaking down, you know, the why. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? While it's open to the floor. Okay, I've s- I've got a motion on the floor, first and a second. If there's any more discussion, I'm gonna listen. If not, I'm gonna call for a vote. Here are no discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. So do we need uh? Do we need to single any of these things out that's listed, one, two, three, and four, or does it all cover that motion?
It's all good. Oh, you're talking about on the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you can do that separately. I'm sorry.
I'll need a little help uh with how to have these worded to.
Um, with the adoption of the budget, you've adopted your ordinance, twenty twenty-three oh three, the first item.
Okay.
Um, the ordinance twenty twenty-three oh five, um, that's a separate fund that we're required by the state to maintain. Um, anytime somebody pays um a um penalty on taxes. Um, or for, for example, for zoning violation, anytime they pay a fine, it has to go to the um Henderson County School Board.
Okay.
So we're ma- we're required to maintain a separate fund for that. And because we have that separate fund, we're required to put a budget on it.
Okay.
Um, you want me to go through all of them or just the first one?
Uh, you want them done just probably one at a time, correct, or?
Yes, it would help.
Okay. If everybody's in the understanding what uh number two is here, someone to make an official motion.
I'll move, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero five, a special fund, revenue fund ordinance four five and four.
Okay, I got a Jeff, give me a motion. Second?
Second.
Randy, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Here are none. Moving on to number three, Capital Reserve Fund Contribution Town Hall.
And and you actually, you could do these together if you want to.
Okay.
Um, as Daniel's been going over, um, your your first one, the Capital Reserve Fund Contribution. Um, with the adoption of your budget, you agreed to put so much aside for um expansion or replacement of a town hall. And you've also agreed to put a set up a full penny towards uh the Capital Reserve Fund for your parks. Um, future improvements. Um, so basically, we have to do that by resolution. Once you created the funds, uh, the Capital Reserve Funds, every time you add to it or take money out, we have to do it by resolution.
Resolution, okay.
So this is the formal part that says, yes, we've adopted the budget. Now this money goes there.
Okay. So someone to make this a motion to uh approve by resolution these two contributions to our town hall and parks, that would be appreciated.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-three dash ten and twenty-three dash eleven. Capital Reserve Fund Contributions for Town Hall and Parks.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Sandra. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, whenever staff gets caught up, we'll move into our committee appointments. Love you everybody.
Okay, you have two um two term expirations that are going to happen in August. And since we're not meeting in July, I went ahead and sent them to you earlier. You have Lonnie Oliver, who has served on the planning board since twenty twenty-one. His current term expires on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. He's got an excellent attendance record and has expressed an interest in continuing to serve. Um, so if you reappoint him as presented, it would be a term ending August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Discussion?
He is from District One. Y'all had said before we didn't have anybody, but we did.
Okay. I don't think he's the only one from District One, isn't he, on the planning board right now?
Uh, yes.
So I'm pretty sure it's.
Yes, he is.
I make a motion that we reappoint Lonnie Oliver to the planning board.
Okay, I got a first. I need a second. Second. Randy, second. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here are none. Okay, Ag Advisory Committee.
Okay, Mike Horn has served on the Ag Advisory Committee since two thousand nine. His current term expires on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. He's a dedicated member and has expressed an interest in continuing to serve. If you reappoint him, his term would be ending August fourteenth of twenty twenty-five.
Discussion? Motion?
I move council reappoint Mr. Mike Corn to the Ag Advisory Committee, term ending August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, I got a motion. How about a second?
I'll second it.
Sandra, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here are none. Okay, we'll move on to staff updates when you get called up.
I don't have much else other than um fiscal year end is next week. Um, the audit is three weeks after that. So if you come in the office and you see people scurrying, that's what we're up to.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Parks and Rec? Nicole?
Just real quick, unfortunately, our weather was not very cooperative this week for our river swirling event. River's flowing pretty good, so we're rescheduling for July the thirteenth. So save the date. Hopefully, we'll have warmer, drier weather for then. And then unfortunately, the weather has also not been uh very helpful in our tennis court servicing, so that project's been put on hold um till we get a little drier weather, but hopefully in the next week or so. Uh, we have the one court open. Um, the lines are not correct where there's been patching done. Um, but that court will remain open for folks to use um until we can get back out there and get things going.
Uh, Dog Park held up pretty good this week in all the rain.
It's muddy, so bring a towel, you know.
Okay. Uh, town manager, Daniel?
A couple of things. First of all, we don't have a meeting scheduled in the month of July, but we need to have one for our tax purposes. So um, we, your regular meeting is um July thirteenth, which we can do that night. Uh, I don't know if council wants to meet during the day. We could look at maybe a Monday in July. Um, you tell us what works for you and we'll we'll put it on the calendar and only take a few minutes. Unfortunately, we can't do remote meetings, so we'll have to have at least have you here.
Uh, I'll leave it up to you guys. I'm here all month, I think, so flexible.
On our regular night, it's good for me.
Thirteenth. Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay, so what do you think? Okay.
Well, maybe four.
Okay, let's do the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, same regular time, right? Six thirty? It usually don't take but fifteen minutes, really. Okay. Then you give a motion. Probably, since it's not a scheduled meeting.
Yes, you, basically, you have to make um by motion amend your meeting schedule.
Okay.
Because there was nothing for July.
Okay. Somebody wants to take care of that for me by motion?
I'll move that we convene on July thirteenth for the meeting at six thirty, being Town Hall.
Okay. Second?
Second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Sandra. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor? Any opposed?
Couple other updates, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Senate Bill two sixty-five has been approved and ratified. So you all have extended your terms by a year. Whether you like it or not, you're on that. Um, so elections for, um, the, Mr. Austin and Mr. Young, worst guess for November, those will be pushed in November point four. The rest of you will be in November twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Um, and then there's a couple of updates I wanted to put out there. Last week, our Parks and Recreation Director, Nicole, had her five-year anniversary with the town.
Wow.
So we're thankful that she's still here after all these years. Thad, who was one of our part-time employees, who has a phenomenal job in the park, um, his two-year anniversary is next week. Um, Mills River actually turns twenty next week on June twenty-fourth. And last but certainly not least, Sue has been with the town for twenty years. Next week.
Yep.
How did that happen?
Very quickly. That's all I have.
Hey, council comments, anyone?
I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
I ask, uh, one's a thank you and one's an apology. So Sue, thank you for getting those numbers together that I asked about on Monday. I know it took time. And Daniel, I owe you an apology for our last meeting, our last regular meeting. While I don't really regret what I said, I do regret how I said it. And I do apologize. I've known you a long time and I still consider you my friend.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Andy. Uh, anyone else? Uh, Daniel, would you talk to somebody at DOT? I mentioned a tech meeting yesterday and about the standing water right in front of Fulham's, uh, old dairy barn that's collapsing. These last few days, it's four or five inches deep, probably a hundred and fifty foot long. It's going to be a problem if they don't get something done there.
Yes, sir.
It'll be a nighttime thing when nobody sees it, you know? It comes out into the second lane over yeah, for twenty-five foot, a hundred and fifty foot in the left or right-hand lane. I appreciate that. And that's all I have. So if anybody's got anything else, now's the time. I'm on, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Sandra. Thanks, Sandra. All in favor?
Aye.